This will be six thirty to seven and then seven we will in our regular meeting. So I will postpone the pledge. And we have a crowd that's always been really fast. And it really does. And just so you know, workshops, we don't make any decisions. Opportunity for us to discuss a particular subject. And then later, if you have decisions to be made, or in fact, put it on a regular agenda. So this is just chatting about, and tonight we're going to chat about. I will let you end with your team.
Alrighty, let's get started here. So tonight, we are having this workshop to talk about. What's what's up opposite of the couple of things? We've had about a year to eighteen months that we've been having events post COVID. And then Alicia Papakota having left as our communication and administration director last week. So it seemed like a good time to discuss how the commission wants to move forward with that. So just a little bit of background, we've got, these are the staff that generally have been, had something to do with the events. Again, Alicia has has recently left. And just to give a little background, I brought her in, I hired her as a communications expert. And we've kind of added events part of her her purview. It's not necessarily an events person. We do have a part-time events person with Jessica. But it's going to be difficult moving forward to find somebody that does events and communication. We'll talk about towards, talk about that a little bit towards the end of the 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 presentation. I just want to kind of give you some background on what we've been doing the last year. Here's the, we've got some public work staff that generally chip in and help out with events, especially the three major festivals that we have. And then we've got Lynn, Jessica and Gabby that are also either part of the building or help out events also. And then, of course, the Oakland Police Department. So just a couple of, a little bit of background. So going back to 2019, we had about seven, and this is just sponsorships that we get as far as these big festivals that we're doing. Going back to where we were in 2019, it was about $7,000 in sponsorships, both cash and in kind. 2021, it was a little over 10,000, both cash and in kind. We do get quite a few volunteers and people that that are helping out. In 2022, we're talking 13,000 cash and in kind plus to 8,000 for a total of about 21,000. And we'll talk about the three major festivals that that these play into. So we've got the the major festival. The first one would be talking about Santa's Lane. So the attendance in 2021 was about 1,750 people. 2022 was about 2,500 people. Very, very well attended event. On in January, we did Heritage Day 2023. We've done that in a number of years. The attendance was outstanding, around 2,500 people. Again, you can see the events team, public works. We had 15 volunteers, some temp workers. You can see with Santa's Lane, we had a four events team, three public works, five officers and 12 volunteers. So it takes a lot to be able to put these events on. In April, this would have been the last year, because Celebration Among the Oaks is coming up on April 1st. But previously last year, we had close to 4,000 people by best estimate at the Celebration Among the Oaks. And we had the events team, public works, some temp workers, volunteers and officers at that event. I'm not able to advance. So I'm just going to give you, put some context to all the different events that we've been doing here. Kind of to give you some, so we've had the reoccurring events that have been on Saturday. Santa's Lane, Heritage Day, Celebration Among the Oaks. We had the Jazz Night with Ron Carter on Saturday. And then we had the Arts and Heritage Center opening with a food truck. And we're doing that twice a month with the Arts and Heritage Center. So that's just a Saturday thing we've been doing. We've generally been trying to open up between 10 and 3 with some volunteers. And you can see the average attendance has been about 33 visitors. And hot dog therapy has been the food truck of about 30 average transactions. And then we've had a couple of one-time things, like the Lakeside Church had a 5K. And Healthy West Orange did the Fresh Start 5K last year. That's now been incorporated as as part of Heritage Day. So we have done a few Saturday events. Weekday events that we've had, we've had yoga on the porch. We've had the Fourth Friday Music on the porch. We had seven dates between 21, 22. We did a number of them from 11 to 3 and a couple of them from 3 to 6. Those have not been well attended. Those, some of the events that we've been trying out, you know, as as part of the Arts and Heritage Center. We've been doing Coffee with the Town Manager. And we have a Wednesday food truck at the center. And generally, we've, we get pretty good turnout to that and people coming into the center. Some of the other things that we've had, Take Over the Trails Day. We did that with Healthy West Orange. International Jazz Day last year from 3 to 6. We had about 94 people in attendance for that. We did the Trees of the Season. We had a bunch of field trips from the school for that. And then the Arts and Heritage Center has been open Wednesdays through Fridays on a regular basis and a couple Saturdays from 10 to 3. I do have a survey that that staff had done looking at other similar type venues to make sure we're at least open similar to other venues. Most of the other ones are open anywhere from 12 hours a week to 28 hours a week. And that goes Winter Garden Heritage, Porter Railroad, Winter Park History Museum, Lake Mirror Museum. They they did do a survey to see when these other venues were open. And we're really not that far out of line, but I know there is a a fall to have it open a little more often and a little more accessible to town residents, especially people that aren't working. And then we had the one-time Special Olympics Law Enforcement Tour run, 150 people. And some of the weekday evening events. We've got the, we've done quite a few exhibit opening nights. We've got a exhibit, I think they're looking to doing six of them this year versus four last year. We, last year, we had the, in 2021, Hispanic Heritage, about 150 people. Places of Worship opening, 125, so those are 2021. February last year was was canceled due to COVID. The April one that also was tied in with the Celebration Among the Oaks, we had about 815 people come through the center. And then the other ones, you can see, the Planes, Trains and Automobiles, 87. Hispanic Heritage in September, 125. Among the Oaks, we had about 400 come through. And that was tied into a Saturday event. And then we still have International Jazz Day coming up Friday this year on April 28th. Fourth Friday Music on the porch. And the Town of Oakland anniversary, we had about 50 people. So what what I'm getting at is basically we've had a lot of different things going on here in town. A lot of small events, three very big events. And so the idea is to talk a little bit about what the commission wants to do moving forward. And a lot of it has to do with resources. Do we want to continue moving forward and possibly expand what what you are doing? So I'm just going to give you kind of summary of the events. We got the three Oakland festivals. We got the the actual Arts and Heritage Center operating hours, you know, when it's going to be open. Part of this is also, they also oversee the town center lighting with this group, with the events group. We've had music events, for example, the Ron Carter music. And I know there's a a want to do that moving forward. Be the exhibit opening, so looking at doing six of them this this year. Community events, we've done the the music, you know, Fourth Fridays on the porch. That that might need to morph into something else, but I also know there's a want to do food trucks. Again, the music on the porch and any other kind of community events that that, you know, can be thought of. Not just food trucks, but there can be other things that can be happening. We also have the partner events, 5K races. And then we partner with OMP when they're going to do Nature Fest, Take Over the Trail with H, with Healthy West Orange. We've got a number of things and a lot of things to commit to if this is what the, where the commission wants to move forward with with events and continue doing what we're doing and then expanding on that. Right now, in the budget, we have $24,000 budget for the three festivals. We've got the town center lighting, about 27,000. And then the Arts and Heritage Center, we've got about a $6,000 budget for entertainment for the different things that that have been going on there with the exhibit openings and such.
And town center lighting, Christmas lights.
Yeah. That that seems to have been very well received, what we've been doing with that. So then I'm going to get into the staffing. So again, we have four events staff. It's really the men who handle all the rentals and Gabby who handles the building and Jessica is part-time. If you take Alicia out, that's a vacancy. So right now, we've got three staff to 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 deal with events. We've got three public work staff that have been available to do events. But one thing I want to put forward, we did lose one of those staff. And the other thing is, the way we've put our job descriptions out and the way we hired people, we now haven't necessarily made it a requirement for people to have to work on Saturdays. Generally, our Monday through Friday operations. So we are transitioning into territory now that we haven't really prepared for as we do more of these events and have the these Saturday type events. We have used contract help some of those events. We do use a lot of volunteer help for events, but there's some, there, you've got to have a certain core group of people that can work these events. Volunteers are great to add to, but you want to make sure you got a core group of people that that are handling these. So one of the other considerations would be, do we have a group of part-time, on-call people that can come in and just, you just call them up to work events? You know, we have a set rate of pay to come in and work five hours, six hours to be able to support these different events, both the big festivals and maybe some of these evening and and weekend events. And then the other piece of this, like I said, so the director position, overseeing both events and communication. And and when I say communication, public information, officer-type stuff, as well as as social media stuff. So when we have an emergency here in town and information needs to get out, oil water alerts, press releases, media requests, we've had a couple of events here over the last 18 months where we had, you know, 50 something media requests because of a of an incident that happened. So you've got to have somebody that's got that expertise. But honestly, man, without expertise to to oversee events is is going to be difficult. So it's almost worth exploring, maybe splitting that into two and having a communication, public information and marketing person as a separate. And you'll see that with a lot of jurisdictions. And I think the town's kind of getting to that point where it might be necessary. What that looks like in the future could be part-time, full-time, contract. There's different ways to handle that, but I think there's a a need to kind of split split that up. So we do have the one full-time director position. And so the idea might be to support the events and oversee the building with that position and then come back at a later point to discuss with the commission, creating a position for the PIO slash communications, either through the budget process or bringing it back for a separate discussion. You know, the one class of a full-time position, director position, is something that we can do within the staff. But if we want to add a position, especially a full-time position, that needs to come back for for, you know, discussion with the with the commission. So with that, I'm just kind of lay out all the different things we've done. There's been a lot of events. They've really, I think, done a great job. I have to give staff a lot of credit for the quality of the events. I've tried to give them the autonomy to go out and and do good things and they've done a great job with that. So I would ask that if you do decide you want to move forward with this, that you do give them some flexibility to create it and come up, you know, try some different things to find out what's going to be the best thing for the town. It is definitely an opportunity because we don't have a community gathering kind of place, restaurants or grocery stores yet that, you know, some of these community events can really help bring in some of the new people and and, you know, and I'm talking some of the, something that would be in the dozens or hundreds, not the two or $3,000 festival, or two or 3,000-person festivals, but the smaller type events that might help, you know, get people out and interact and meet each other and, you know, kind of create some of that community feeling. So if you do want to do that, then I really, you know, we we need your feedback that you want to put those resources forth so we can, as the budget's being put together, the proper resources as well as staffing. Turn it over to the commission to give us a little bit of feedback on where you want to go with the events and and staffing and really making sure the quality's there.
Okay, I have a couple of very small thoughts. And then I really would like some good conversation available. One thing that we did not talk about at this stack is the new Oakland, the Oakland General Sports.
It's Oakland General, yes. It's the concession that's coming in the, they'll be opening up this weekend, I believe.
Yeah, so I think that we should include that in the deck and what their operating hours are, like seven days a week. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll have to get some more information to you on that. We're trying to give them the flexibility to be as as successful as possible. So once that, once they have their established hour, we'll get that to the commission.
I don't want to say that. All of the events we've done have been very, very good and very well done. And Joseph has brought us good talent into town. And we've got to figure out how we partner on those kinds of events. And, you know, this is, you know, we're growing. It's been two years that, you know, we've accomplished all of this. So I think, you know, that the door is open for even better, bigger and better things. So I would add Oakland General Store to that. And I think the expectation is no days. So that's the only thing I have.
I agree. We're getting to where we need to split the positions. We need to have social media and, you know, the advertising type thing separate from the event planning because the event planning can turn into, and I think personally, I would like it to turn into a big beast because the more that we can do and the more that we can do, that the the two to 300 and not the five and six dollars.
Yeah, the smaller ones are better for us in town. It's nice to bring the big ones in, you know, you know, you know, Santa and Easter Bunny and, you know, the Heritage Festival.
And and my suggestion is you've got three signature festivals, but that's, that's, that's a great place to be and not try to but not try to increase that, but it's the smaller community events, like you're saying, two to 300.
But I think if we were to hire that person as to to manage that business and we do make sure people are where because it's just kind of like theme parks and stuff. Events are weekend events. They're they're nighttime events. We need to make sure that whoever and however we hire, that they understand that that's a flexible schedule type thing.
Okay, go ahead.
And the only question that I have in 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 my opinion of that is, I know that the event planning will probably end up being a full-time position somehow or the other. I don't know how much time of it that Alicia split up with social media. Do we need a full-time for that? That I don't know.
And we might. My feeling is. But I need it to staff to kind of flesh that out. The other thing, this is more kind of just to bring some thought content to it. It's, you know, we're supposed to keep our on-call. You know, if I went to marriage and if when I left Disney, I said I'd never plan another event again, I would be the kind of person that you could slot into running events with very little, I mean, I don't need you know, I did events for 10,000, over and over and over again. So I could use something like this. And it would be great to try and find people who live here who have an interest. Because I think that, I think that could, you could find some people.
Yeah, well, and, you know, it's, like I said, it's, it's, you, you need to to decide if you want to move forward with parties and then give the staff the ability to figure out the best way to staff them and support them moving forward. But it's going to take resources, one way or the other, budget and or, you know, compositions or whatever it is.
And the only other thing I'm going to say, and then I have really other. The Ron, what was his last name?
Carter.
Carter, yeah, was one of the best events I have ever attended. The sound was amazing. And I think that we could really, really make that a true hybrid event where Joseph brings the talent in and we do the the work of looking at an event on so that everybody is, nobody's overloaded and everybody knows, you know, the the drill. And we could do that over and over again if we could find, Joseph keeps bringing us that kind of down.
Shirt's on, Joseph.
And I, that would have been my only other thing was putting, and I think we should rely heavily on that, or sorry. For that, for the music end of it, because you were, that's just your thing. You're very good at it, you know what you're doing and you you're proven in that part of it. So how we, how we merged it together, everybody gets work out, we can work that all out. But as far as the music goes, you're just good at it.
Well, and then that's the part, you know, if we want to make it a true town event and the town puts up the resources and the staff to to organize everything and then, you know, the, and then the talent, you know.
Right.
The only thing they don't have to do is is find the talent that can, they can concentrate on all the rest of the ancillary things that need to happen as far as, you know, marketing and information and get sponsors and stuff, you know, to offset some of the costs.
Okay, we only have about five more minutes left. So Joseph, I would like to hear what your thoughts are.
To be real quick, I think the first thing we need to do is put it on paper, put a talent together like we we tried before. So we can see what the impact looks like. Then Mike, Commissioner Satterfield just mentioned, you know, the hours of the day, you know, when we, when we decide when to do it. And then, like you said, the weekends, that's when people, you know, really get out to really enjoy it. We've had, I want to say complaints, but people have said, you know, you have the music from 11 to 3, you know, who's enjoying it? It's kind of hard unless you retired and you're not doing anything. And then really, do you know about it? So just really, if we put a, put together a calendar of of the things that we want to do and how we want to do it in the, in those months, then we can see what the impact is. Just like with the Heritage Day, Heritage Day really wasn't ours. It was Oakland Nature Reserve. I mean, it was ours one time and then you came, went to the Nature Reserve and it's back. So that's something that we hadn't had in a long time. I used to do Juneteenth like 10, 12 years straight. That went away and so this Ron Carter or or a nice concert night is kind of replacing something like that. So I think the biggest pieces, we just got to put on paper.
That was.
Yeah, once you put it on paper and see what the impact is.
That that's part of, we, we need to get staff in place so they can put this this stuff on paper so that we know that we've got the support we need to do Saturdays or not. Some of that stuff, so it kind of goes hand in hand with, are you willing to put forth the resources? And then they'll, they'll get it on paper. I know I've got all faith that they could put together a series of events on a regular basis to try to, try to, you know, meet the expectations.
And then we have, it was mentioned that we do a couple of Saturdays. And so instead of doing a Friday music, you add music on one of those Saturdays, you know, to make. So that's what I'm saying. Right, so if we put everything on paper, we can see what's being done and then just plug and play and just go from there.
Well, it's, it's on paper in this way, we need to put it on a calendar.
Right, that's what I'm saying, put it on a calendar because, you know, we're looking at, to me, it's overwhelming just looking at all the different events. You know, I like to see, you know.
Yeah.
I want to see which month, you know, because sometimes we, we select the answers. We may shut down the Friday, we definitely shut down the Friday for Black Friday, Black Friday and the Friday for Christmas. So we definitely don't know, we don't do those two months. May even shut down any kind of music on the Friday for Memorial Day. So we know, independent of when 4th of July falls, so we know, you know, when we're not going to have, you know, some music or whatever or an event that's that's happening. So it's all about putting the visuals and we can look at it.
And, you know, the the exhibit openings that we've done, the Thursday nights haven't been bad. We do the five to six. So I I don't necessarily think that that change in those would be, but in between those, doing some Saturday things, figuring out some of that and maybe in lieu of doing the Friday afternoon, we do a Saturday. But just need to make sure we've got, we've got the support to be able to do that. And then we can start moving forward with getting those things on paper and kind of retooling some of the schedule, you know, from last year. Fourth Friday.
The only thing I want to add to a week here, the Friday and the activities at the building really came from Mike and and Dennis. Because Dennis wanted something in this building. So Dennis wanted that and then Mike wanted to make sure he kept some kind of building. So having a place is really, it's really like pushing it and making sure we do all we can to get that building, or save the White House. So we have a a center location, then Dennis wanted some live music here, you know, monthly. And so that, but then the muse, the museum came and then we just kind of shipped it over there. And then we expanded because of the desire to build.
Let's listen to these two guys and I think we'll probably thank someone in here to to lay it out for us to go, yeah, that's a good idea or maybe, no.
I don't want to be repetitive. You guys said it sounds very good and I agree with all three of you said. And kudos to the staff the last couple of years and what they've been able to do as we grew into all these events. And, you know, just multitasking, where it's, you know, pulling things off. I think someone should, you should have someone in charge who can coordinate, even put it on 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 this calendar, whatever. Instead of just carrying the hat, I'm I'm for that. Oh, this is going to have, now that we're going forward. You know, figuring that it's what's better for us and considering our neighbors.
Yeah, yeah.
Considering we're living at the same time or on course, something that will be here, then everybody goes to the bar.
What we do, you know, the Winter Garden, that and we do see honestly, because people are already. Rick?
Our agreement, mostly everything I've said, I think we do need a full-time events person. But it'd be our person, like Mike said, I don't, I don't have any idea how much, you know, how much time that they need here, but when we need a PR person, we need a PR person when something happens. So probably need to, and it's going to get bigger anyway, so we probably need to look at.
Well.
A full-time.
It has been, you know, so a lot of forms or specific things and you can't, you can't come up with everything. You know, who knows, you know, some things happen. But I'm really hopeful and I don't know anything about it that we could hire somebody as contractor or, you know, part-time. It is an art to it.
I never become a bigger movie until I'm out of the window, so I'm saying, I don't do that. That's what we need to go.
Yep.
Our consensus is we need to move forward with with prior planning events with a a person that oversees it. We need to put together, we need to to continue the direction we're going with the events and get our calendar and and just. And then the PIO is something that needs to be, to be thought through.
Yeah, I think we talked about, we need to think, unless you just said this, think through the Friday events.
Yeah, that that needs to be part of of getting the staff in place and then then putting together the calendar and including thinking about the Friday events versus Saturday events and plugging those in between the exhibit openings and stuff like that. So we need somebody to sit down and go through it all and coordinate it for the, for the rest of the year.
And have in the Oakland Generals.
Yep.
We're done. Are we done? Does anybody else have anything to say? I'm sorry, we're not going to be able to pay input from the folks, but we're going to come back at this at another date where, you know, we'll both surely take it. But we ran out of time.
All right, good night. Thanks for coming to y'all next time.
Give it about two minutes, anybody needs staff or break or whatever, and we will start again with our regular meeting. Give it about two minutes, if anybody needs staff or break or whatever, and we will start again with our new meeting. Can be, this is the regular Oakland change the town.
Launch a seat.
This is the regular town Oakland Commission, um, we'll start, pledge the invitation, please stand.
Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your talent. I ask that you give us your wisdom and discernment, and that we make decisions that are the best for our town citizens. And that we may honor you in everything we say this in, in your name, amen.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Roll call, Commissioner McMullin.
Present.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Mayor Stewart. All right, the first thing on the agenda is presentation, and it's the introduction of Officer Justin Gao.
That you did. Good evening. I appreciate you all giving me a couple minutes of your time, did you have something?
I was going to say, I, there may be people here who don't know you, so make sure.
My name is De'Aaron Easton, I'm a chief of police here in Oakland. Uh, some of you, because I recognize some of your face. Those of you who don't, please come to chat with the chiefs tomorrow, and we'd love to meet everybody. Um.
Snazzy outfit he's got.
So I would like to present to you, if you don't mind, Officer Justin Gao, he comes to us from Brookhaven, New York. He, uh, got a, his equivalency to a two-year degree from Charter Oak State College. He served five years with the New York Police Department, and he was also in New York and nine years an EMT paramedic. And we are very lucky to have snatched him up and become a part of the Oakland family, so uh, if you don't mind for a few minutes, we're going to slay him in, take his oath of office. Campbell's going to pin his badge on for him. If you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, Justin Gao.
I, Justin Gao.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and protect.
I solemnly swear that I will protect.
Support and protect. And defend the Constitution and government.
And defend the Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The laws of the state of Florida.
The laws of the state of Florida.
And the charter of, and the ordinances of the town of Oakland.
And the charter and the ordinances of the town of Oakland.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
All of the duties of police officer for the town of Oakland.
All of the duties of the position of police officer, duty of police officer for the town of Oakland.
For which I am about to enter.
For which I'm about to enter.
We've already, perhaps, oh, you have one, look at that.
Yeah, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
One day, one day. He always, he's right in the back, it lasts. One day we'll put him right up in the front. Take care, all.
Thank you.
Now, that is fun stuff.
Okay.
We have more fun stuff on the table, too.
Where is?
But it's not in some of that serious stuff. Um.
Good.
So we have come to the public forum, and the public forum is for anybody who is here that wishes to speak on something that is not already been done. Um, we have a consent agenda, do we have any questions or comments about that?
Except the consent agenda.
Awesome, um, you got it? All right, uh, we have a motion for a second, do you have any questions or comments in the audience? Bring it back to the table, all on paper. Go here for more fun stuff. Uh, right end donation for Habitat for Humanity.
All right, the, uh, the town of Oakland has come into possession of a piece of property at five thirty-two West Sadler. Uh, we got it through, uh, it had some code enforcement liens on it, and we got it through a deed and will for closure. So, um, something we've talked about in the past, but the idea is to dedicate this piece of property to Habitat for Humanity uh, for a future Habitat House. It is within Stone's Throw for this, the sewer system is now, the wastewater system is a smaller lot, so it'd be more of a cottage-type house, I think, but, uh, it definitely would set up well, and it's in the neighborhood right near Pollard Park, just around the corner. Um, so, uh, with that, um, I've definitely done a few words, um, from Habitat, and then I'll, I'll give you the recommendation.
So Oakland has a very proud, um, history with Habitat for Humanity. In fact, West Orange Habitat for Humanity started at the Oakland Presbyterian Church, and all of the initial houses were built in the town of Oakland. So for us to be able to come back here and work collaboratively with the town again is just pure pleasure. So as a board member for Habitat for Humanity and a thirty-plus-year resident of the town of Oakland, I am so proud that we're making this move for Habitat and for our town. And, um, for those that don't know, Habitat for Humanity is the largest single provider of affordable housing in the world. And we're really excited about that mission and our new homeowners that will be on this, um, land, and we'll make sure that we include you all in the invitation for the groundbreaking and for the dedication of that home, and thank you so much for making this effort, and we look forward to a long partnership with the town of Oakland again. Thank you.
Um, I'm going to read the recommendation off to you real quick, so staff recommends that the town commission donate the surplus property to West Orange Habitat for Humanity, with the caveat that the property must be used for constructing an affordable, single-family residence. Staff additionally recommends that the town commission authorize the mayor to execute any related title transfer documents.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
In this, we're so moved, but committed.
I'm like a motion to approve a land donation to Habitat for Humanity and everything else you said.
They, they'll move.
Okay, thanks. However we want to do it, we got a bunch of them a second. Um. So I'm going to take it to the floor, any questions, any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Yes, please come up.
My name is Darrell Watson, and it's just, uh, it's just a point of just consideration, uh, for the committee is, I'm a member of the Masonic community here in the area, and to my understanding, this, this plot of land was, uh, was former land for a lodge, and.
Just real quick, so the lodge property is two, two parcels over.
Okay.
It's not this one, but it's one that also has a large lien on it, and could also possibly be a habitat if the, the lodge wanted to, to move forward with that.
Awesome, and so all I, all I ask is, consider, because of the historic, um, um, value of, of whichever piece that is, um, just consider keeping that in the Masonic community, I'm sure there are folks possibly in the room who may have relatives or family members that may be a part of the Masonic community. We just ask that, whichever portion that is, just consider, um, keeping it in the, um, Masonic community. Um, I saw your dedication that you gave at the cornerstone back from the article in two thousand and eighteen, I thought that was an awesome thing. So we appreciate you for that as a member of the Masonic community. And also, should you need any type of assistance or sounding board, we, we, I'd gladly volunteer to be someone to bounce, you know, whatever consideration that you make, and that's all I want to do, so I appreciate you for, for your assistance.
Okay, that's great.
You could give us your, uh, contact information, that'd be great, sign and sheet over there.
Hey, we're bringing back the table, all on paper. Okay, Betsy, let's get a pass.
Yeah, you want to do a quick photo?
Everybody? We haven't had our picture of Betsy in a long time.
We are going to talk about John's Lake Outfall now. I'm going to turn that over. Right?
Uh, yeah, real quick, uh, um, Jack's going to go through this, um, he's got the latest information on it, but this is a, uh, just to reiterate, this is a very complicated situation with this John's Lake Outfall canal, it's the only outfall to John's Lake. Uh, it's been unmaintained for a number of years, it's causing some issues, um, that we're going to talk about tonight. Um, but there's also some bigger plans, working with county and some of the other stakeholders, uh, that's going to take some time, so there's multiple layers to this, but we're going to talk about one particular issue tonight, uh, with the terminus of it, direction that it's going, and some of the silt and sediment that's been deposited, so turn it over to Jack to kind of give an update on, on where we're at, um, with that part of the, the situation.
Been doing a little research. Just a little, little research. And, uh, came across a, a map, official county map of Orange County, eighteen ninety, and it includes the outfall channel as a, uh, body of water on it.
In eighteen ninety?
In eighteen ninety.
Yes.
So it, it may, may pre, predate that, and maybe partly, uh, natural uh, in nature too. Looking then later on in nineteen, uh, fifties, the USGS, the US Geological Survey mapped this area, and it shows the southern part being enhanced, you might say, straightened out and made bigger. And the northern part, it shows as a natural channel. You can see a drainage area in between those two, but it does not show that as a water butt. One of the unusual features of this particular, uh, channel is that its high part is in the middle. It actually has, it goes over hill, you might say, so that explains why it's intermittent in the sense that it has water in it from the south, from John's Lake, and water in it from the north, coming from, uh, Lake Apopka. So that, that's interesting information in terms of the nature of the, of the channel, that it may have, uh, preexisted, uh, or may have been enhanced by man, uh, but not necessarily completely created by man. You can imagine you see up in the distance, there's a brush fire. And you think, somebody ought to do something about that. There are two comes by, it's still a brush fire going on, now it's getting close to some houses, you think, somebody needs to do something about that? That's kind of where we are with this channel. We have to create a fire department first, and so a lot of people are talking about creating a fire department, but in the meantime, if there's a fire, and somebody ought to do something. So, in the interest of that, Oakland Park went out and got some competitive price proposals to try to deal with the immediate brush fire, which is the rerouting of the channel that is northern end, where it goes out into Lake Apopka, that through natural processes, it turned left and started filling in along the bank, rather than going straight out into the lake. And that situation has gotten worse over time. And the reason that it's getting worse is because there's erosion occurring further up in the channel. And that's, the next house that's going to catch on fire, uh, is when we start having more damages to uh, people's property, uh, that is more substantial than what we're experiencing today. So we have a situation where we're waiting to build the fire department, that we can put out one of the brush fires. But this is a volunteer fire department, we need lots of people to participate. You know, this is, is not just something for the town to do. So, through the competitive prices, we got a low price to handle the, uh, restoration of the channel in accordance with guidance that we've received from the engineers and from St. John's River Water Management District. And also dredge the areas that are impacting the boat docks of the property owners adjacent to that area. And to relocate some of that fill material, uh, so that it can be utilized, uh, upland uh, in the Oakland Park subdivisions construction. And to also try to reinforce the channel so it doesn't turn left again. That price is a hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars.
Which started out at two hundred and fifteen thousand.
It started out higher, uh, we talked, we had four companies, uh, to propose prices, uh, three companies responded. Uh, and it started, as you were saying, one twenty-nine five, one forty-seven five, and two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, further negotiation with the, with the low bid, and asking them to send the, their price proposal to the town. Uh, they came up with the price of one hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars, and that the work will be completed by April twenty-ninth, if we're able to, to get started by the, the start of April.
Um, is that just to straighten out the channel?
No, that's to do the channel. That's to install, uh, protections in the lake itself, so the dredging operation doesn't move sediment out into the lake. It includes the dredging of two areas, one for each of the two boat docks that have been affected by the, the redirection of the stream. And the placement of that excess fill material uphill, uh, into the Oakland Park subdivision. And we have met with Oakland Park, and we've met with the, uh, Southern Oaks HOA representatives. Uh, we presented both of them with easement agreements. Uh, the Oakland Park easement agreement is to allow us to go through their property uh, in order to access the site, rather than go across, uh, the HOA property. Uh, so we don't damage the retention pond and, and things that are there now. They're clearing out the area on the Oakland Park side that we can get to that. Uh, it also allows us to place the material that we dredge out. Uh, it also allows us to place the material that we dredge out on their property. Then from the Southern Oaks HOA, we asked for three easements. The first one is a temporary construction easement to allow us to do the work on their property. The second is a perpetual access easement that allows us to go in and look at the channel periodically and make sure that everything's working the way it's supposed to. Uh, and the, the third is a, an easement that allows the drainage to be maintained. So an actual drainage easement. There's currently on that parcel of land that's owned by the HOA that this final part of the channel extends through. Uh, but it's not big enough to include the entire channel and it's not dedicated to anyone on the platform. It's just a drainage easement twenty feet wide. So what we've proposed is a drainage easement that would be the width of the channel plus ten feet on each side. That gives us room to be able to get in there and do things in the future if necessary, along with the right to transfer that easement to any entity that is created in the future to try to manage the entire channel. So for example, if we set up a separate entity like a district, a stormwater district, or if Orange County assumes a responsibility or whatever happens, we have the ability to transfer those two perpetual easements to that end. Also in there, when we go and look and we see something, we notify the HOA of what we found and they need to propose a plan as to what they would do to address the problem because it is their property. Could be a tree fell across it. It could be, somebody dumped tires out there. It could be all kinds of things that, that we might find that we would have, uh, noticed to them. We would not have any ownership in the property. It remains their property. It remains used for their retention pond. Uh, and would be theirs to maintain and mow the grass and do all that type of thing. But we would have the ability to go in and look at it. And we have not yet signed any of those easements. It would be maybe premature to do so. Uh, at this time, they're still being reviewed by attorneys. Uh, but otherwise, we're in a condition to, to take some action if you wanted to. And when, if you, I would say that we need to have a discussion in two parts. The one is whether or not the town wants to move forward with any financial participation in this work. And the second would be under what conditions that participation would occur. Now, in, in all of this, the anticipation would be that the town was the contracting entity, but perhaps not the only funding entity involved in, in paying for the work. But that the town is in an advantageous position, uh, to be able to move forward as the contracted.
And we're. We put my, I actually volunteered to go on point for this, so I'm gonna turn the meeting at this point for this subject over to Mike. And let him take it from here.
What has Land Ever said? They have been out there involved. I don't think it's started that.
What's Land Ever?
What's Land Ever gonna bring to the party? Uh, they're the, they're the administrative entity for the Oakland Park subdivision. I'm surprised.
Uh, they have indicated that they would still participate as long as they receive some benefit from the, the work, which would, in this case, would be fill material uh, that they could utilize to replace fill material they would have to bring in, uh, from a remote site.
And that they still, with the thirty thousand dollars, they, they're to accept that.
I'd, I don't know that that's exactly their price point. Uh, I think they're probably looking at that as a total commitment, but they have to also do some work on other parts of the stream in order to protect their property. Uh, so probably not quite thirty thousand dollars, but, uh, okay, they, they're still, they're still participants, but I don't know for sure exactly how much money that would be.
And, uh, I know you had a meeting Thursday with, um, uh, the HOA, what is, um, what, what came out of that?
Uh, we went over the, the situation with them, talked to them about the, the easement agreement, went through their agreement, pointing out the different aspects to it. Uh, they took it with them. They sent it to their attorney for review. And after they get the attorney's comments, it's my understanding that they're gonna have a meeting of the HOA board and they'll decide how they want to proceed.
Okay, and, um, the other part to it was the two homeowners that said that they would, uh, personally put money in. They're looking for the monetary commitment.
Yes, I, I have heard from third parties that they are willing to make a financial spend. But I've not heard directly from, from the homeowners themselves.
Okay, so we gotta start somewhere. You get that, and then this is, this is, uh, where you've got it. This is where you gotta start the problem, or you gotta stop the problem. It's gotta stop bleeding before you fix the other race.
My, my opinion is, um, this is, this is a good price compared to what we've seen. And we should move forward on this as expeditiously as possible. And, um, you know, I'm open to negotiation with other parties, but, um, when, when, and you can tell me why I'm saying bad things in a minute. But, uh, I don't think we need to, you know, I, I think we're looking for a fair deal here and that's what the attorneys are gonna tell us.
One other thing, just to, perspective wise to look at is, you know, the, the town's making an investment to straighten out this canal. It's going to be part of what's the bigger investment in the entirety of the canal, hopefully from all the stakeholders. Um, if you do want to do any improvements further up the canal, the end of the canal needs to be working properly. So this investment is not something for just a particular situation. It's an investment that's going to, you know, be part of the bigger, you know, as, as Jack put it, you know, building the, you know, creating the fire department. This investment will be part of that situation, so.
Homeowners Association, or, and if they're, you know, obligated. Because if we're gonna obligate for this particular thing, we're obligating one homeowners association, but when we get to winners landing, are we obligating that homeowners association? And how is everyone in that homeowners association responsible for a specific thing?
Well, here, here is my thought, that's where I would go with it after spending, you know, myself again, incredible amount of time too, which I'm glad I did, going out to look, going out to, to try to figure out what the best thing is to come up with that, starting there on the north, northern end. I, I turn around, if I turn this way, I'm calling something else. Um, but that's where it's gotta start so we can work our way up.
Tell it to Steve and he didn't run out the door, is I, I think Land Ever must should just make a deal and do it.
Hmm, that's exactly where I was going and then.
Just for this one time, not to obligate us going further. But unless there's clear, clear law that sucks in homeowners associations and, and homeowners, I don't want to get into that.
I, I don't want to get into that because right now what you just said is the brush fire. Let's stop the brush fire before it becomes a forest fire.
Well, and that's where I started.
Good argument number, thirty-three thousand dollars for everything you're saying. And that's why I started with this in the beginning last month or six weeks ago, is let's, let's start right there and get this thing running right.
Number and then we get to have.
Yeah, but it's gone. Cause it's now we. Just for the homeowners over there that made this, this kind of thing. All the way, the other way here.
Yes.
And that's the thing, and, and like you're saying, I'm not thinking about what it is for these couple homeowners. Uh, I'm thinking about the whole side of that lake. I'm thinking about it going all the way up. I'm thinking about John's Lake. I'm thinking about it going all the way to Black Lake. It, it affects all the way down line if it doesn't get straightened out, which was no easy answer. But the easy fix to start with was get as long where it's supposed to go so we can cut the damage and put that Band-Aid on and move forward from there. Once we came up to a hundred and, and, and three thousand dollars, my idea is, and you just said it is, see what we can do with Land Ever. Let's go ahead and get that done and then we can work out whatever deals that attorneys can work out and move from there. That's kind of where. I think it's gonna get more expensive if we don't already have the job.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're, if we say we're gonna do this, we're not gonna back into whatever the lawyers say later.
No, 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 no. It's.
That's what you said.
No, there is a bid. It needs to get done. We'll work with lawyers on their easements and agreements for that. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, so, yeah. No. I say we have to commit to this, this, and then if we do negotiate with, you know, Oakland Park, if they jump in or get the fill, whatever negotiations afterwards just have to get done.
Park, we can bring them in very quickly.
So again, that's after a whole lot of homework on this thing, that would be my recommendation.
We've all done a whole lot.
But you guys have been working on it for a lot longer than that.
I, I also want to bring up the, you know, the, Orange County is also making a commit. They're not making a commitment for this particular thing, but they are already moving forward with, uh, updating the study and the, the study that would then lay out that the kind of improvements that need to be done so that everybody can get involved. So they're already putting some money up to do that. They're also evaluating the, the trail crossing and the pipes underneath the trail and the scouring that's happening on the south side of that and possibly how it impacts the, the homeowner there. So Orange County is also, uh, trying to put out a fire too and make an investment in the long term for the broader discussion of the entirety of the canal. So I don't want you to think that, that they're ignoring this either. Um, they are looking at this as a bigger thing than just the town of Oakland issue.
I think it all sounds promising between Orange County and, and St. John's Water Management District. Yeah, you know, they're, they're getting it clear now because we, the next point up is the house we might look at that, um, you can see it going down, uh, to the canal that, you know, right now, there is no crack in foundation and they're probably a year or two away from that. But if we do, we don't do anything a year or two from now, we're gonna be picking pieces of that house up out of that canal.
Any of us in the Arctic with, unless I'm crazy, Joseph and my partners.
Oh, you're not crazy? I don't see why we didn't ask for, but, you know, I mean, we're still, in good faith, just talking to other, other, um, stakeholders, say, hey, look what we've done.
Yeah.
Put them on notice.
Coming, yeah, and, and coming, you know, with other issues. Yeah, we're just committing to this one.
Right, right, right. But still, we can still ask them for.
Hey, it don't ever hurt to go and, and have every interest at party, look at this thing and try to, how to work with it. So I think once we put this first foot forward, I mean, that's a, the heck of a commitment that we're making here.
Let's just put a deal together.
Yeah, let's do it.
But, but to your point, regardless of this, yeah, you're crazy.
I am.
It's true.
We need to have a good start.
April one, first, April one.
Yeah. So April.
End of the month.
Wow, 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 yeah.
That's cool. Which really fits the water timeline for, um, rainy season.
It gives it time to, to do the, the permitting and, and get the final guidance from the engineer. They're providing guidance on things like if you, you come across a big tree, how do you go around the tree? Slope the banks, how deep does it need to be? Does it need to be crazy getting closer to the lake? Uh, this, what, what we're gonna be building has, has some technical aspects to it. It's not just dig a ditch and hope for.
Okay, but I think we are at a point where we can say, take the next step and start to put the deal together.
Right, right. And then I would like to make a recommendation if I can, that you could consider for.
Well, we have to hear from you guys too, so go ahead.
All right. Recommended town commission accept the competitive bids that were received by Oakland Park as meeting the requirement for competitive bids through our own purchasing rules that we award the work to the low bidder, which is Solitude Lake Management at the contract price of a hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, with the town's financial contribution not to exceed, say eighty-five thousand dollars. And contingent upon contributions re, being received from other parties in order to fully fund the work, receive the needed easements from the Southern Oaks HOA and the Oakland Park subdivisions in a contract, uh, with Solitude that the lawyers agreed to.
Sounds fair.
Sounds fair to me. Okay. Okay, I gave it to you and I keep taking it back.
Okay, it's no problem. Happens. You know, I mean, I get that, so. All right, so I think we are in agreement with everything you said, but before we can take it to the table, I think we need to come to the audience, so we will go to the audience for comments. Okay, um, wow, would we do so moved again?
No, absolutely not.
Um, because I'll never get that all over again, so.
No, this one, this one needs to be over cleared.
You wrote this?
If the vice chair is quasi-chairing this portion of the meeting, I would ask that someone else make the motion. Or someone else.
Good luck reading that chicken's bread.
I print for them.
You're not gonna wanna wait, you're gonna watch what you just said.
It was a lot. That's why it's, it's all on tape.
And people here.
Say, you believe it's. I recommend move that the town commission accept the competitive bids received by Oakland Park as, as meeting the requirements of the town's purchasing rules and award the work to the lower bidder, Solitude Lake Management, at the contract price of a hundred and three thousand five hundred.
With the town's.
The town financial, that's fifty, eighty-five thousand.
I think Oakland Park will see the light.
And then, and contingent upon.
And contingent upon contributions being received from other parties in order to fully fund the work, receipt of, maybe, that's from the Southern Oaks HOA and the Oakland Park subdivision, subdivision, and contracts for the work.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that was written in Hebrew. At this point, uh, before we vote, we will turn to the audience for comments. We have comments. Yes, sir.
Yes.
One time, come on up, give us your name, address, serial number and.
Okay, so I'm gonna, uh, respectfully disagree and offer a different perspective on things because I am not seeing for a fire at the moment, at least in our end of the terminus. Uh, my name is Ed Bulikowski. I live at fifty-one Vandermeer Street. And, um, when I first became aware of this issue, I was told that Oakland Park Construction had caused significant silt to, uh, be deposited in the vicinity of Mr. Robert Christie's property and it was obstructing the, his personal dock. I supported the idea that the enjoyment of Mr. Christie's dock should not be diminished by negligence on the part of Oakland Park Development. No sort of property value be diminished. Subsequently, I began my own research to follow up and I attended several of these commission meetings where I learned additional information about the issue and the information that I gleaned from the research and from attending these meetings is this. The outfall canal has been present for decades and has continuously deposited silt into Lake Apopka. Since it began flowing, we just heard tonight that it was from eighteen ninety. Uh, I have seen no record of the date when the canal, except for now, began to flow eighteen ninety. The point is that this is not a new situation. And it's visible on property appraiser aerial photos. You can see that terminus growing over time, over the past twenty-two years, what we can see on the property appraiser. While it appears that, that the canal has exited from multiple points until Lake Apopka has seen on aerial photographs, there is no handmade structure that has failed and needs repair, nor has there been any act of the town or the county or residents that have caused the canal to change course. It is its own natural flow. We are witnessing the develop, the natural development of lake shoreline that occurs everywhere. Groundwater exits from drainage and conservation easements. Lake Apopka is owned by the state and not by any lakefront homeowner, not by the town of Oakland and not by the Oakland Park developer. Lakefront homeowners do have the right to personal access to the lake and when building permitted, have the right to build a dock, use the lake for their personal enjoyment. There is no apparent infringement of any lakefront homeowner's real property related to this issue. In the case of Southern Oak where I live, um, whereas where the canal enters Lake Apopka via a drainage and conservation easement alongside our pond sea. Property ownership ends at the shoreline according to the plaque of Southern Oaks subdivision and according to the current Orange County property appraiser records. I'm unaware of any boundary survey that confirms this. That's what all the information available says. The town of Oakland has stated that there's a previous, uh, previous commission meetings that there are forty-two property owners along the canal. The town also stated that there are no laws, regulations, or other legal compulsions that require maintenance of this canal in any specific state or to any specific. that require maintenance of this canal in any specific state or to any specific standard now or in perpetuity. In fact, there are no known standards that apply to this canal. There is no legal compulsion to change the natural flow of the waterway to conform to any particular homeowner's desires now or in the future. Lakefronts are dynamic and lakefront homeowners might best benefit by enjoying and adapting to natural changes in the environment they have chosen. Maintenance of waterfront property is always intensive. Should any dock be impacted by changing shorelines, the straightforward and most economical remedy might be to simply repair the dock and extend it into deeper water. This approach would result in minimal impact to Lake Apaca, minimal impact to the town of Oakland to other concerned parties and would provide boat access, dockage, and value that's of lakefront homeowner's desire. Any decision to expend funds now may be premature and prove to be ill-considered if done in advance of the results of an updated Orange County drainage report and specifications developed by competent engineers that consider the current and planned new development on Johns Lake along the Outfall Canal. And the recommendations and engineering requirements that the updated Orange County plan may present. Brushing into an expenditure of town funds to fix only one symptom of a larger root cause originating in Johns Lake may not produce the desirable long-term solution that the town of Oakland would want. So thank you for listening to my different perspectives.
So by the sound of that.
Alright, thank you. You're right. Um, yes, ma'am. You come on up and give us your name and we'll start from there.
On your painting, I live at forty-one Mill Holland in Southern Oaks. So um, I have with me here a copy of the record subdivision plaque of Southern Oaks. So I was wondering if this gentleman, I apologize, I don't catch names very well. Tell me on the map where you were describing, because those of us not really those of us who haven't gone in depth into this, visualize it accurately. And.
Try to figure out where this is.
Well, I know, because I've studied from that itself. That there is a designated.
Jack, if you could just run it down real quick for her there.
Conservation drainage easement, which is along this line in the corner that points here. And I follow those lines, this roughly. This area that you're speaking of to give them easement to is outside of the conservation easement line. So that tells me just Lehman's interpretation that that is not ours to ease on or not ease. In, in the way I described the subdivision was supposed.
Might be something that you want to just come on in and, and sit with him with a map and he can explain that all to you.
No, there was a map.
No, there's not, we're not surveying, we're not surveying.
Okay.
We're not a survey, without a, a recent survey of this area, you know, really where the canal is, exactly who owns what.
So, so let's make it simple for an individual. Come on in tomorrow and sit or make a point with Jackson.
My point is, the purposes of this meeting is this is a representation of an after survey. So.
This, this is the, this is the channel here.
Correct.
And this is a twenty-foot drainage easement. And the channel shown on here is completely within the conservation and drainage easement that's granted. Here, this is a building setback line uh that was put on the plaque.
Okay, so you're saying that
Yeah.
easement is not beyond this?
The, the easement is, would be on this piece of property here.
But the line, but the line is here. After.
It needs to be. Certainly share with everyone.
And, and he can explain that off to you, but we understand where you're at.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's Carl Summers. I live at one eleven Mill Holland. The fourth house on the lake, for surprise. I've lived there for twenty-two years. And you know, we never had a problem till Oakland Park was there. So I don't know why we're giving Oakland Park practically a buy. And they created the problem. I can't imagine all this dirt, mud, sand, whatever it may be, travel from Johns Lake. Would be an impossibility. And you'd tell me, well, ago you'd tell me, actually, the river kind of runs upstream and then down.
We can see it in, that, that exact sill in all different places. So that has been proven in this Oakland Park, I guess. And, and we understand if that's where you, you know, if that's what your belief is, but we have shown that it, it is an Oakland Park doing this and and they are willing to try to help us through the situation.
Putting all people here are all blown.
We're looking in the wrong direction, guys.
Thank you.
You know, I've lived there twenty-two years and, and we, we had nothing to do with it. And the owners there, now you're saying, well, we need the owners to put in a portion of the money to help do this job. This was reported over a year ago, but what did we do then? Nothing? We did nothing. No, you've did nothing.
Excuse me. The owners have come to us and said they're willing to. We have not asked owners for any money. And nor would we ask the owners of the property for the money. They have come to us and said, we are willing to put in to help out. That's strictly voluntary things. And if they said no, then that's where it would go with too. They were not trying to make any homeowner responsible for this. That's.
Owners have done nothing but live there and maintain their property.
So we're, we're on the same page with that.
All of that sand and dirt was not there many years ago till, till Oakland Park came in. And that, all of this has happened since Oakland Park came in. So I don't, you, you're never gonna convince me any different.
Okay.
And Oakland Park shouldn't have a pride in this and taking care of this problem. Because they're the fault. They're the ones at the fault. And yet you guys are just giving them a buy.
Alright, well, we appreciate it. Anybody else?
I live at forty-one Vandermeer Street. I'm one of the two or three or four homeowners that are affected by this. The crawls dock, he's already lost a couple of feet of depth. Also, next door Angel, they've lost a couple, lost a couple of feet of depth. They're okay with that. And I understand that some of you here are against it. I, I suspect that if you lived on them, they'd lost. You could your boat and your boat out and your boat out and someone had to build an extension out to get to Lake, if you had some problem. And I, I had a problem also because I did not do anything to cause this to happen. So uh, does anybody know how much of a piece of this property the, the homeowners association actually owned? Is it like four hundred feet I've heard?
Jack, you know that, I think the total length is around five hundred and twenty-five feet.
So, and it's kind of me that they have no interest in, in funding any part of anything that's done. So I don't really know where that goes. I noticed that we're thirty-five thousand dollars short or approximately. Uh, personally, I don't want to put any money in this, but if I have to in the end to make something happen, I'll consider.
Anybody else? Alright.
I have something.
Uh, we'll bring it back to us. Ms. Mayor.
You know, we can sit here for, I don't know how many more meetings and talk about whose fault this is, how this happened. Everybody's got an opinion. There's already been one study done. And sometimes in business, you just gotta do what you gotta do to move forward, whether it's fair or whether it's not. We are not committing to anything other than this one-time construction. And we are going to ask Oakland Park to help us with that. But this is, you know, this has got to be done. And we can argue all day about reach recalled and what's fair. But this is a good bid and this will take care of our residents.
We don't want the HOA to pay for it, that's for sure.
No, we're not asking for the HOA for anything, even. Nothing.
We're not asking for the residents.
Right.
I'll make here. We're not asking for the HOA. So we're not asking, we will ask Oakland Park.
Yeah.
But we're not gonna wait for Oakland Parks to debate and negotiate with us years and years later. So we have the rainy season around the corner as citizens, you consider your citizens and your friends who you live with here. But we're gonna fix this now and they go after money from Oakland Parks, whoever else can help us later.
That, that's very well put, Sal. And, and from the beginning, we had said, forget yesterday. I don't care. We don't care. You shouldn't care who started, how it started, why it started. Let's start from here and try to get it fixed and move on. So. But before you do, let me make sure we don't have any more here. We'll let one. Sure. Okay, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's a what then? We have another hurricane. How do we know that fixing this little terminus is not gonna break through again next year after the next hurricane or the year after that? I am concerned about us spending money on a little bit when the real issue is the amount of flow that's coming through that, that's originating somewhere else. And we're, they, we're gonna, it's like, I'm gonna build a house and then we're gonna burn it.
Okay, well, and, and again, we get you.
Or may not last. We don't know you.
So not saying that this is the end. We're not just gonna do this job and walk away. We are gonna continue to work with Orange County, St. John's, Oakland Park, and whoever else has a dog in this race to continue to solve this problem. This is just the first piece of work and it is only that end of the canal, correct?
Yes, yes.
Let, let, let me put this in, in a little more perspective also.
Well.
We got it.
Oakland Park i- isn't off the hook by any means. They own a piece of this canal and they are going to have to make improvements because they need to cross the canal there. They are going to be required to do some improvements to their part of it, not the whole thing, but within the scope of their development. They're gonna have to find a way to slow the water down to keep it from eroding anymore within their development. They're looking to do some widening. They are going to invest a large sum of money to make improvements to this canal that should hopefully slow that water down before it gets permanent. So that what we're doing here should add to what they're gonna do and hopefully allow this water to go out the right direction. Um, if they slow it down, and they probably do this over the course of the next year as they wanna build houses in phase seven. So they've got things that they need to do. So if they do a still-in pond like they're, they've been talking, it will slow that water down so that it's not coming down in the same, you know, torrent that it is right now. And hopefully then what the improvements that we've made will hold and allow that water to go out. The bigger picture, they, if you live on Johns Lake, you want more water coming through this canal than what's coming through there right now. There's seven hundred houses up there.
And there'll be more.
Exactly. And that's what Orange County with the study that they're doing is going to address what needs to happen in order. And it's never gonna function at the level that, that you think it needs to, but it needs to function at a predictable level. But Orange County is gonna do this study and figure out what it is. And then, once we have a plan, it's a whole lot easier to get Winter Garden in O'Callaghan, Lake County in Claremont, and, and Orange County and Oakland on the same page to, to then present this to St. John's, say, hey, we've got this, there's flooding issue. Where can we get some acting money? It's, it's going to take building this, this fire department to, to get that. But I can tell you that Oakland Park's not off the hook. They are going to put a large sum of money into making improvements on their part of the canal to slow the water down so that they can build houses.
Yeah.
If they don't do that, then they're, they're not gonna be able to do what they need to do. So um, trust that they're gonna help us with this. But they're also doing improvements on their side. And with all of this.
They don't have control of what's upstream from that.
Right.
So, so they may do something here and make a sill pond and, and that pond will fill up in two years because of more flow coming down and, and then what?
Well, they're, they're on our side with trying to get the rest of the people in Orange County involved with trying to get this.
We're, we're gonna eighty-twenty it because we could go on with this time, we just shouldn't forever. But yeah, but the, the, the idea is to answer your question is we're not done. The two, the two points to take away. We're not done when this gets done. We're still pushing Orange County, pushing St. John's water. We wanna get Winter Garden, we want the other forty-two. We're still gonna push for that to go. And the other caveat is Oakland Park is, as you wanna put it, off the hook. We're still going with them, but we, you gotta start somewhere. And that's the point to it because we've been talking about it realistically, what, a year and a half, two years now?
Long enough.
Long enough. Um, matter of fact, uh, you guys were talking about it with, uh, with, with Dennis, uh, probably two, three, two, three years ago. John Schmidt's been working on this project for almost ten years. So, but no one's done one thing to start with it yet. So that's the point. Yeah, so, so that's kind of the point with it, you know. So, and, and we promise you, we're not gonna walk. So, um, but we're, I don't wanna just keep rehashing the same thing. We seem to all be kind of doing that. It's very easy to do and I get that. Cause we're all passionate, whether it's one way or the other. So the comments are appreciated, but, but they're the same ones. One more time.
What, if any liaison has been made with St. John's Water Banning District?
Just, just to help us with the permitting at this point.
So they haven't given any preliminary approval for, or not? Or the dredging and the decarding things?
Yeah.
They have.
They are aware of it. They are aware of the project.
Yes, yes. They, they've been involved. We meet with them every other week. Uh, and with the Orange County and some Lake County people, all the stormwater people have agreed that this is a necessary first step uh, to try to, you, you gotta start where the water goes out and you work your way up.
Nothing goes forward without St. John.
And they're, and they're on board.
Absolutely. We, we've been working with, with all up and down the line inside of.
Okay, we beat it to death. Anybody else? One more. Forgot.
I have one.
Okay.
You've been talking about what I said in two weeks ago, that I'm not fair about this. And we're working, we're working too hard on it. It's completely erroneous. What I was saying was there's other things to do in Oakland besides this. And we have spent enough time and resources trying to get this solved. This is solved for now. And we're gonna move, if it gets voted in, we're gonna reform this because we do fear. We care deeply because otherwise we wouldn't be doing any.
But it's been run through engineering to make sure that the scouring stuff will take place and we're gonna lose all this work that we're having done.
That's all part of the whole deal with the engineering.
Okay.
Yes.
A real.
I'm a real engineer.
Yes.
And, and your name again for the reference.
Jeff Sandy, uh, Dennis, ninety Dennis.
Answer is yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyway, okay, I just was, I, I just hate the city to put money into something. That is one thing, we've got to protect the property. That orange dirt is washing into the lake. It's kind of like. It's them.
Like, we, we can assure you, we, we're gonna dot every, uh, eye and cross every tape, make sure we. So, alright, with that, I will bring it back to the table for a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it and you guys can move on. And with that, I will turn the meeting back over to the mayor. Yes.
Yeah, it's the town manager reports and then it's a person. So we're five minutes maybe from being done. It's the best part.
Yeah. Okay, Shane, if this is the best part, we expect you at every meeting.
I'll, I'll be brief. Celebrating among the Oaks, uh, April first, ten AM to one PM. Come out. It's gonna be fun. And we have a tri-county meeting, uh, Plica City's meeting here on Thursday. Come out. It's gonna be fun. And we have a tri-county meeting, uh League of Cities meeting here on Thursday.
Oh. Thursday is a busy day.
Yes. It will be, absolutely. It starts at twelve.
It's twelve, like one fifteen one thirty. It may not go that long.
So I shouldn't be able to.
I get my teeth combed, so.
It gets not like that long.
I I gotta press my whole shirt.
Yeah, but if you put it on a park hat.
That's all I have.
I'm sorry, um, thank you.
Real quick. Golden Eagle Award for the mayor, twenty third before the next meeting, so encouraging everybody to go celebrate.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, yeah.
Your calendar.
That's it.
Ricky?
I don't have anything.
Joseph?
I was on a call uh with the floor League of Cities let this Monday, Tuesday, yes, no, Monday, yeah, Monday afternoon. Um talking about advocacy, uh League of Mayor, I mentioned last time, Mayor Mel Smithen. He's the League of Mayor's uh chair for the state of Florida. He's really pushing for the state of Florida to um be the leader and um infrastructure dollars from the White House.
That would be great.
Yeah, so that was brought up at the meeting and I sent the email out to staff uh as relates to um grants and dollars for infrastructure. I know we're talking about water peace and all that kind of stuff, so there are a lot of dollars out there and they're really pushing the state of Florida to really lead that charge. And so hopefully we can plug into some of those dollars as we continue to.
So would that be a good conversation now with James and Larry?
This federal, so.
Oh, it's federal.
But it still would be a good conversation to have with um uh Congressman Webster. Uh but there's the the website has the information to still have him understand and
Yeah.
Help, you know, quarterback some of this stuff for. So I think that's the big push. And then the Monday calls about what's going on in Tallahassee, the session just started. So there's a lot going on in Tallahassee. Uh there's sovereign immunity. There's a lot of things that's going on that's affecting our cities and towns. Yeah.
You're gonna meet us there or?
I'll meet you there, yeah.
To look for water dollars and other things while we're there.
That's all I have.
Could you share?
We're gonna make it a water feature.
Oh, there you go. Um.
All right, I have I request a former resident to throw out.
Former?
Ronnie Cothern, which I'm sure you know, uh his dad, Red.
Oh, yeah.
Apparently Ronnie has sent me the um the documentation. We're back in the forties. His dad owned the property where the post office is. And he beaded it to the folks that were the first postmasters here who in turn later that year beaded it to the town of Oakland and that's how we got the property.
Okay.
Ronnie is asking somehow if we could see it in our hearts to do some sort of a plaque to put up on the property for, you know, to name to say thank, you know, his uh his mom and dad. And I can't think of it. I've got it written the name of the first post office people for allowing us to have that.
I don't even know who that was.
Yeah, I I didn't know the name when I ended up saw, but I guess Red gave it to them and they gave it to the town. And of course, we've had it ever since and that's how we got the property. So that's what he's asking. And um if you guys want to think about, you know.
I yeah, we see.
Okay.
And then we do have naming committee. I don't think that's why. They got definition or A, B, C.
So the next step maybe is is a reach back out to Ronnie. He's has sent the the deeds where they were um to me where it was transferred to them and then transferred to the town.
I'll just see the appropriate intention and give it to.
Okay, I will touch bases with everybody in agreement with that. I will uh I will touch bases with him and and go from there. So thank you so much. Um other than that, I think um some good with scoring that lottery. We had the lottery results. I think everybody got those. Um I'm good to go.
Ricky did mention this, so I'll mention it. Um uh because you and Steve are more appropriate than me. But we all went to the Hydrilla. And uh you know, and um everybody made it to the red side where and saying what was most where you want to see the Hydrilla eradicated and so on and so forth. So you guys can fill in the blanks there. You were both there.
Yes. So uh there was a meeting on they're they're going to treat some Hydrilla in Lake Apopka. Of the proposal has been about thirty five hundred acres. Um they treated sixty six hundred acres last year. I don't know that they're going to add anymore to what has been proposed, but what they were looking for was information on where they should treat, what's the priorities based off of citizens that live along the lake, Oakland and and Winter Garden, uh as well as people from Montverde were there. But also you've got other um people that use the lake, including the fisher anglers and um the duck hunters. Uh apparently Lake Apopka is one of the top destinations for duck hunting in the state of Florida. And so there were the you put the red dots on the places where you wanted it eradicated. You put the green dots on the places where you want it left. Up on the north shore, there's areas where the heat map goes that it's actually come to the surface. That's where all the green dots were, leave it alone, because that way the ducks can come and land on it and eat it. Um areas around the the crescent here where it's all in red, let's make sure that's eradicated following up with last year's um uh treatment. Uh what you want to do is make sure that the the Hydrilla doesn't become resistant to the treatment, so they will come back and retreat certain areas. So most likely that's what's gonna happen is the areas that need to be retreated plus a couple other areas will get treated. And the north shore will be left. It's just guessing at this point, but they will release that over time. They need to treat sometime by the end of April before the water gets too warm. So you expect that uh if you live along the lake, you'll see some treatment happening, but it will be a lot less than what really needs to happen to to maintain the lake. Um it grows at a very rapid rate and probably in a year, that thirty five hundred acres and then some will be in the lake. So right now it's ten thousand acres, about a third of the lake, about thirty percent of the lake's covered by it's covered with Hydrilla on the ground. So just uh it was a it was an interesting meeting and it was an interesting way to do it uh based on limited resources and and uh limited funding. At least get a good idea where they should treat, but it's definitely not gonna be enough.
Right, right. And we also, you know, these meetings are always um like the lunches are good for. We had a I had a good chat with the lady from the Audubon Society regarding birds, protection and things like that. So um you know, we got a lot of we got a lot of stuff done that night. It was well attended and it was also very well orchestrated. It's great, right?
Yeah, it is. Me, my personal observation, there's all the stakeholders being all the people that live on a lake don't want Hydrilla, but the hunters and fishermen who come from out of town, the fisher want or hunt here wants the Hydrilla.
I I I will say that there was a couple of very impressive presentations on the health of the lake, both from St. John's and from FWC. Uh both the uh the the native aquatic vegetation that's taken hold, the amount of phosphorus the the phosphorus hit the goal for the first time in twenty twenty two, fifty five parts per billion. They set that goal in nineteen ninety six and it they hit it for the first time for twenty twenty two. Which means the clarity of the water and and just the health of the lake is is immensely better than it was in nineteen ninety six where it was two hundred and fifty parts per billion. Um and then the the actual fish in the lake is it's impressive. There's some preppy bass in there. They had a picture of an eleven pound bass that's in the lake. And so uh it's impressive what's been done over the last, you know, twenty five years since they bought that property on the north shore. So
Then St. John's, another concern they have is this Hydrilla is not doing real well at the bottom. So we get hurricanes, flows and they worry about it following up and going down into boats or canal and blocking data where they can't bring it like that's also a concern. A bit blocked now. And then like or they can't try to talk.
And then they're also talking about doing some test areas, I think ones in Winter Garden for boat washing and Windermere so that you don't, you know, don't want to get Hydrilla on your boat and then take it to another location for vice versa. So that may become boat washing stations may become a norm anywhere you get into the lake.
Okay, I want to get one, you know, the science to have to do that. I mean, when you're in the lake and water and boat.
It's no hands. I'm not.
They might like they have sign up.
Yeah, or I mean, if you take it home and wash it, great, but.
Yeah, you can't guarantee that though, fear.
I think the whole idea, they don't want it to leave the area, period. But okay.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Well, um I think we've covered everything we've done extra for you or later, a few more spots. So um just.
Well, half the minds are satisfied. That's adjourned. It is not twenty two, you know.